Alderman Kurkowski is absent. Alderman Lorick?
Here.
Dukneak?
Here.
Toman?
Here.
Gale? And Alderman Guzikowski is absent.
Would everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Alderman Lorick, would you start us out?
I do the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is the approval of the minutes of February 4th, 2020. If everybody please take a look. There are no omissions, errors, questions, or comments. Motion?
Lorick will move to approve the minutes of February 4th, 2020.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukneak?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Item four is first for our public, one of our public hearings, and it's a request to rezone the B6 interchange regional retail district and establish a planned unit development on various properties along Drexel and IKEA Way. Kathryn, would you like to read that in, please?
Certainly. Public hearing number one is to consider a request by Walden O.C. LLC to rezone to B6 interchange regional retail district and establish a planned unit development on the properties at 1920, 1900, 1850, 1848, 1816, 1800, 1750, and 1700 West Drexel Avenue and 7700 South IKEA Way. Applicant is Walden O.C. LLC. Property owner is Walden O.C. LLC. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is January 15th, 2020.
Thank you, Kathryn. Doug?
Thank you and good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I am the Director of Community Development for the City of Oak Creek, and this is a public hearing and a request to rezone the properties that were just mentioned roughly in the northwest quadrant of I-94 and Drexel Avenue to B6 interchange regional retail with a planned unit development. Again, this development is being planned as a destination retail plan development that will consist of really a mix of uses that are likely to include, as a matter of fact, will include hospitality, some destination retail, food and beverage, and most likely some multifamily residential in a mixed-use setting. The property at 1920 West Drexel, and actually a remnant of a property that the city once owned, is currently zoned I-1 as institutional. That's being folded into the B6 interchange regional retail, which was the remainder of the properties as well. All of those properties are being combined under a planned unit development designation. And that PUD statement, which is a part of your packet and part of the ordinance, contains the, kind of the statement explaining what the PUD is, and as part of that, the PUD is required to kind of clarify whatever standards are being asked for, not, I shouldn't say relief, but there's some, in PUDs, certainly the standards are somewhat negotiable in the sense that you're looking at an overall site plan, an overall development, that maybe varies from some of the more specific requirements of our municipal code with respect to a minimum lot areas and setbacks, buffer yards, provisions for shared parking and reduced dimensions, a parking lot screening both interior and perimeter, provision for shared open space, site and architectural lighting, and some permitted accessory and conditional uses. So with that, the PUD, which is part of the packet, and let me see if I can, oh, of course, this is gonna, oh, god, I mean, again, apologies. Well, obviously you can't see on the near screen, and I don't want to take the time to reload it right now, but you do have a copy of the PUD statement in there. Again, city's been working with Walden as well, so, as well as the developers of individual sites within this PUD and overall planning development designation that were to create the type of regional retail, destination retail development that I know you all have been looking for, and what we've been appraising you of, with effect in some of the negotiations we had with individual site developers within the PUD. As we discuss this, if maybe I can try and reload that information on the screen for you, but with that brief introduction, I will say that this is a public hearing, and that anyone has any questions or comments regarding the proposed proposal to rezone these properties from I-1 and B6 to B6 interchange regional retail with a planned unit development designation, please fill out an appearance form. Once your name is called, please proceed to the podium, give your name, address, and proceed to address your questions or comments to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. This will be the first call. Second call. Anybody wishing to speak? Third and final call. We'll now close the public hearing and move on to item five, which is consideration of the ordinance to rezone those properties that Mr. Seymour just spoke of. Open it up to the council. Questions? Comments? Greg?
Just two quick questions. The proposed hotel development, will that be in Lot 2? Is that correct? Okay.
Oh, sorry.
And then with Lot 4, I see the roads in there with the residential property. Lot 4, if there is future development there, what type of a setback from that residential property line is there?
There would be buffer yards in there. Typically, it's 20 feet in addition to what the required side yard is, so it really depends on what's there, if it's parking or if it's building, but there, obviously, that is the city's sincere hope that the property owners can come to some agreement and make that part of the overall planning development, as it certainly would make for much more cohesive development in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Mike?
What you, Rich? Just for information purpose, the road coming off Drexel near the Begon Lot?
Yes.
That will be a two-way street, or is there any reason to make it a one-way?
Well, it'll be one-way coming off of Drexel, so northbound only, so you won't be able to go southbound and exit on the Drexel. All traffic, once it gets to the east-west leg of it, that will be a two-way street. It will be public street, but the only exit from this will be onto IKEA Way to the signalized intersection at Drexel.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Seeing no other questions? Motion on five?
Lorick moves that the council adopt ordinance 2964, an ordinance to approve a rezoning of the properties at 1920, 1900, 1850, 1848, 1816, 1800, 1750, and 1700 West Drexel Avenue, and 77 South IKEA Way to B6 interchange regional retail district planned unit development.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Dukneak?
Aye.
Item six is a consideration of a request to amend the existing conditional use permit to allow storage of inventory vehicles for sale on a property at 561 West College Avenue. Kathryn, would you read that in, please?
Certainly. Public hearing number two is to consider an amendment to the existing conditional use permit to allow storage of inventory vehicles for sale on the property at 561 West College Avenue. Applicant is Christian Orr Carvana LLP. Property owner is Patrick For Holdings LLC. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is January 22nd, 2020.
Thank you. Doug?
Thanks. So the applicant in this case is requesting an authorization with support of the landowner for approval and amendment to the existing conditional use permit for the property at 561 North College Avenue. So council may recall that back in 2012, a CUP was authorized for this property that allowed for automobile service and outdoor storage of rental vehicles on the property. And really, the key to that was the term, the specific term of rental vehicles. So fast forward to today, and a proposed tenant of the property, or tenant of the property, Carvana, is looking to store vehicles on the property, but that's not allowed on the conditional experience since they're not rental vehicles. And in fact, Carvana is the storage of vehicles that would be for sale, but not for sale in the traditional sense where it's a used car lot or a new car lot or what have you. It's a new model, at least it is for me, that you, their inventory is available for review online. It's not, you don't go to the car lot and, you know, walk around and you don't test-drive them there. All the business is transacted off-site through the internet. I mean, you can come and pick up the car there and exchange or bring in your trade-in car there, but really, the transaction is handled outside of that. So it's not, you know, when you mention, when you consider a car dealership, it's really not that. It's a storage of vehicles that are being sold as part of their internet retail operation. So between 4 and 8 employees would be onsite on any given time, occupying 18 vehicles for the employees themselves, so certainly parking is sufficient to accommodate both them, the current user of the property, or a portion of the property, which is Enterprise. Again, the storage, the existing CUP does allow for the storage of vehicles within the fenced area, but it does not allow for the storage of semi-trucks, trailers, RVs, construction of vehicles, or equipment. So in essence, the only thing that should be stored back there under the CUP is the rental vehicles for Enterprise and the vehicles, the inventory vehicles for Carvana, should this conditional use permit be approved. Automobile service is already allowed, the existing CUP, however, engine repair, body repair, and painting will not be allowed uses. There is actually clarification within the proposed conditions and restriction that no sales will take place of facility. Again, this intent is to distinguish this property or the CUP from a traditional automotive dealership where you've got vehicles coming in, coming out, test drives, customers, that's not going to be the case here. No site or exterior building modifications, again, with the exception of a possible sign or modifications to the wall signs are being proposed. The planning commission has recommend, has reviewed the proposed amendment to the conditional use permit, has and has recommended its approval, subject to the attached conditions and restrictions. Anyone with any comments, questions regarding the proposed amendment to the conditional use permit for Carvana for this property at 561 North College Avenue, please fill out an appearance form. Once your name is called, please proceed to the podium, give your name, address, and proceed to address your questions or comments to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. This will be the first call. Anybody wishing to speak, please approach podium. Name and address, please. You can give that to Mike, he'll pass it on down the road.
Keene Keel, 513 West College Avenue. I own three properties right next to this proposed thing going on. Last time we were here, I brought to your attention the problems I'm still having with delivery trucks, and that problem's not going away. It's still transit trucks unloading on College Avenue all hours of the night. You told me, call the police department. I did call the police department. Officers told me that I have to stop calling them and bring my problems to you guys to get some changes. There's this existing problem with garbage. They have two dumpsters that they constantly overfill, and they're not putting the lids on, and all that garbage is blowing around the fence into my property. It's been doing that all summer long and it's still doing it. There's four signs out front that say absolutely no unloading cars on the street. That's being ignored. Also, the delivery times are between 8:00 and 4:30. That's also being ignored. They're delivering cars anywhere from 3:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the morning, and constantly waking myself up and my tenant at 5:31. I'd like to know how we're going to cure these problems.
We talked about this extensively at planning. This was probably more of a discussion than the use of the property itself, to tell you the truth. We did have our zoning enforcement person here at the time. As far as garbage goes, unsightly stuff like that, it's going to go through zoning. It's noted in the minutes that the hours of delivery were never in the conditional use permit the first time around. We now have them in, and it'll be between 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. on delivery activities. So I would imagine that's for the entire property. Am I correct in that, Doug?
Vote applied. The legal description applies to the entire property.
So that should take care of that, because I can't speak for why the officers would say bring it back here, but probably to see what the conditional use was and what was in the ordinance. And I was surprised to find that out at planning, that we never had times of delivery stated in the conditional use in the first place.
Those times, the hours sign's been up there for over a year.
They may have put them up, but that doesn't mean we had any enforcement of it. So now we actually have it within the conditional use.
So it's, it's 7:00 or 8:00 to 7:00?
If I'm reading it correctly, it's 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
And what days? Monday through Friday?
That's a good question.
Not specified.
Because they're ignoring any rules right now. It's ridiculous. It's constant. I mean, I have, I get it, I have to deal with it during the day, but there's absolutely no relaxation at night.
Understand.
Constantly getting waking up.
If it's that big a bother, and I mean, if, and it has been, obviously, in the past for you to come here, both, both planning commission and the council meeting, the best thing I can say is, let's get PD in a room and get our zoning in a room and take it from there.
Who do I need to contact and what do I need to do?
Again, it would be Lori Miller as our zoning, zoning person. She was here the last time you were here at planning, and you could probably call the sergeant on duty, or you can talk to our police chief sitting back there eagerly with a card, and he could explain the process better.
I just, you know, it's a free-for-all now, and if you allow them more flexibility, I don't see anything getting improved.
Well, it's going to be up to them to schedule when their vehicles come in. Obviously, an independent contractor who drives a truck comes in, picks up the load when he gets here, he gets here depending on traffic. They may not be expressly employed by Enterprise or...
Two weeks ago, a car rented one of the semi-trucks out there, and they're also blocking the driveways, like, you know, can you get in our property? With semi-trucks.
Again, I can't speak, but again, if they're there and they're, and they're doing it, again, I think you're still taking the proper steps going through the PD.
It's always this, so, I mean, I got the officer's badge number. It's Gary Schneider.
I'm not worried about that. I stand behind our police officers. They do their job, and again, I don't think they're giving you the runaround at all.
Well, I told him what you told me last time, and he kind of laughed at me. He's like, no, you gotta...
And again, I would suggest that this hearing is about conditional use permit for Carvana, not the operations at, at Enterprise. And certainly, we know, we know you've got some issues with that, and, you know, you've got a channel in which to proceed with all this, but this is not...
Oh, the issues with Carvana too, because that's the one I actually called the police on last time, was Carvana delivery.
Well, again, it's going to go through the proper stations. We're redoing our zoning, and it's going to just go through the zoning process, and that's the issue. But right now, it's to approve the use of the property, and that's what we're looking at.
Ken?
Ken?
Question for, as you're standing there. You said there's some signs in front that have some parking restrictions posted on it? Are that driver's signs or...
There's four big white signs. They say absolutely no delivery of vehicles on College Avenue. Hours of delivery, Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 4:30, no weekend deliveries.
Signs those are? Are there City of Oak Creek sign or...
It's on both entrances, both sides of both driveways. I mean, it's very clear, you can see it.
Does it look like the owner of the property posted that, or...
I don't know who made them. They're pretty nice signs.
Yeah, that doesn't sound like an official county sign to me.
All right.
I mean, if you drive by there, you can, you can see them. You can see that the dumpsters open all the time, and the garbage is blowing all over.
Okay.
Thanks.
We'll work on it. Second call.
Good evening, council. My name is Christian Orr. I am the applicant and representative for Carvana from Phoenix, Arizona.
Chris, you said?
Christian Orr.
Christian, can you...
Yep, sorry. Apologies. I appreciate the time that you're taking to review our application, and in, in a little bit of a response as well as just to address some of the concerns that have been previously brought up, I wanted to let you know that we at Carvana have taken the community concerns seriously and doubled back to make sure that we were in alignment with the things that we have intended and continue to intend to do. Our deliveries currently are not happening in the PM hours. We have one that's in the AM, and so I'm, I can't speak for what those deliveries are doing. I can only make assumptions. But we do have a third-party service that currently is delivering in the AM hours, and in doubling back with them, we made sure, under known certain terms, that they are not to be operating outside of those sound ordinance hours, and have had them logging the times that they have been coming in, which I'm more than happy to share with you the last several weeks. All of those have come after that 7:00 a.m. hour, and I just want to reassure that we have every intention of continuing to do that. Sincere apologies to the community for whatever disturbances may be occurring, but I'm not sure that what the sources of those are in terms of our application. We intend to follow the sound ordinance and be good community partners, so I'm also here for any questions about our operation that I'm able to answer.
Alderman Dukneak, 3rd District. And Doug, you may be able to answer this as well. So is Enterprise still operating there as well in addition to Carvana, or will one replace the other?
No, they were, both of them are up.
Okay, and understanding the business model of Carvana, a significant amount of your inventory is from rental vehicles. So is there a concern that with both of those operations going on at the same time, is that just too much activity that's taking place at that location?
If I may make a correction, these are all used autos that are for sale only. There is no rental operation with Carvana, and so the purchases have instances come from rental companies, but they're not directly connected.
Oh, they're not, they're not coming from Enterprise?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I would, I would even, even if that were to be the case, which is not, I mean, Enterprise was authorized for, you know, a certain number of vehicles in that lot, so it's really just a matter of whether, you know...
They stay within that number?
Whether it's half Enterprise, whether it's half Carvana. I mean, it's just a number of vehicles, and the lot was designed for a certain number of vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
If I'm not mistaken, the Carvana cars come in, they're delivered, the used ones are picked up, and then a given time period, they're off the lot.
And as follow-up to that, our trucks all unload in the back lot. They're, they understand clearly that there's nothing going on on College Avenue for those activities.
Other questions for Mr. Orr while he's up? Greg?
I'm just curious with the conditions and restrictions, now that it's spelled out an actual operation time, does that give the city more ability to enforce versus when there were no times spelled out?
It certainly does. I mean, it's going to be, I mean, certainly given the hours that are there, if there's, if there's violations that are taking place, it's really up to the property to document those. And, I mean, should those become violations, documented violations, I mean, there are avenues that the city can take to revoke that conditional use permit involving a public hearing, is essentially the same, a very similar process to the granting of the conditional use permit.
And then assuming the signs that are up right now are private signs saying that there's no unloading of vehicles on the street itself, is there a way to add that as a condition that they should not be unloading on the street?
Yeah, I think you certainly could do that, although I suspect that being, being a county facility, I mean, their rules would govern regardless of what the city's conditional use permit says.
If I could make one request, in section 3 with the restrictions and operation requirements under heading F, I believe there might have been a cut and paste error that I would like to clarify. It reads, "Long-term storage of vehicles shall be limited to the rear southern parking lot. The front north parking lot may be used for short-term," parenthetical phrase, "less than 14 calendar days," end of phrase, and then it says rental vehicle storage, and I would request that that rental be stricken, because that's the purpose for why we had to...
I think that the reason why that's still in there is because the CUP still allowed to accrue to the entire property, so...
Right, and the reason why I'm requesting that is because we also have a northern portion of the site that we use for our employees that are not rental vehicles, and I just wanted to make that clarification, that that's for both operations.
Hey, could you repeat that again, just to make me clear what you're asking?
Essentially, just to strike the word rental after that 14 calendar days, so that that allows for our employees to have their vehicles up in front and whatnot, and similar activities to that. It's not exclusively to rental vehicle storage up there.
So, and I guess the question I would have then, in what would you be storing? I mean, if it was just employee parking, that's not really long-term storage, I mean, what other vehicles would you be storing long-term then?
No, I'm not suggesting that there is any long-term. I'm just saying that we strike the rental component to it, just because our employees' vehicles are not rental, but it's just a technicality. If we're, if we're all under that understanding that that's what that's for, then that's fine. I just thought that that was significant.
Just want to make sure we're not having any unintended consequences with the, with that change.
Unless you'd put rental slash employee vehicles and add employee to it, and you cover both.
Would you be okay with that?
Doug, what are your thoughts on that?
I'm not sure that it's necessary, but, you know, if you want...
Yeah, I think we're kind of reading...
And if that's the case, then that's fine. I trust your judgment. That's just the intent that I'm hoping to bring up, is to allow for, to...
Just to make sure that the intent's there, so for what's on paper, I guess I would defer to Doug.
So maybe the best course of action is recognizing that you know how we're going to be enforcing that. I would hesitate, be hesitant to make changes to the conditional use permit that weren't at the request of the property owner and that are only made at the request of one of the tenants. So I would suggest at this point that we keep it the same.
If, if you feel that that, if that covers that function of employees' parking...
The parking lot is, it's a parking lot for people, for, I mean, your employees can park there, there's no question.
Okay. Yeah, maybe we're mincing words.
If cars were sitting there for a year or something, and they were using it for long-term storage, it's another thing, but...
We just don't want those being used for, you know, we see a shipment come in and they, they're sitting there for two weeks. Oh, yes, I'd keep it the same.
I think you'll be okay.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'll make, we're sending our zoning person out there to see where your employees are parked.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Any other, oh, that was the second call. Nope, you're all set. I'm losing track where I was. Third and final call. Anybody wishing to speak?
Evening, everyone. Rod Carter, I'm an attorney with Hush Blackwell in Milwaukee, 555 East Wells Street, and I'm working with Carvana on this. I'll make my comments brief. I'm here speaking in support of the application, but I thought it might be helpful to give the council a little more background on the neighbor complaints. I was involved with Carvana in the application early on in the process, and we had a couple different calls with Carrie and from your community development department, and since those calls have followed up with her, because she communicated the ongoing neighbor concerns to the property, and Carvana heard them, they are, I think if you... They are, I think if you would look to see in the communities where they're operating, they're very good neighbors. It's not an intense use as we've been talking about tonight. I think your amendment to the CUP, as you pointed out, gives a little more teeth because now you've got hours of operation. But I wanted to communicate that Carvana's heard that. It's been communicated back to the local staff, the concerns about deliveries, time limits, noise, and trash on the property. So we intend to be good neighbors. We intend to adhere to that permit and we recognize that there's teeth in that permit if we don't. Thank you.
Appreciate that. We look forward to you being a good community partner also. That was the third and final call. Anybody else? Now we'll close the public hearing and move on to seven, which is consideration of an amendment to the conditions and restrictions for the property at 561 West College Avenue. Open it up to the council. Greg? All right. Anybody? Ken?
Doug, in the past, I think we've talked about, I was reading the section in the CUP on violations and penalties and revocations, whatever. We've talked about having CUP subject to some kind of review period potentially.
For new CUPs, typically we have taken the step of putting in a duration in there, an initial duration. I mean, I, this is an existing one. I, you know, I suspect that the city may have the authority to do that. It's a little trickier because it's, you know, you're amending an existing conditional use permit. Certainly if we were establishing a brand-new one, we would have a limited to a term of, initial term of typically would be 10 years, but.
Because I see, I mean, this one calls, you have two convictions of a violation, which we've seen that it's a relatively rare occurrence.
It's to revoke a conditional use permit, there's a, there's some.
A lot of leeway granted in a violation.
There are.
All right. And, well, this is Carvana's deal, but. Dowards operation seems to be a good compromise. As long as we can enforce that, I guess.
I think it would be our goal certainly to align those with the typical hours of operation and certainly align with those of the noise ordinance.
If problems are actually reside with the other entity on the property, then that's something else.
I mean, that's, it's a code enforcement issue and we'll certainly, it's been brought to our attention, certainly, I mean, it's always going to be an instance where you're going to have to document those things.
Chris, anything?
Just to go back to the one resident, you know, he's been here before. Clearly, we need to at least listen to a little bit of what he's got to say and see if there's any way we can, you know, have a come to Jesus meeting, you know, not with Carvana, but maybe the other place company that's there, if that's some Enterprise or something, and see if that, you know, I think your log for dating the times and dates for your deliveries, I think that's a good idea. I don't know if that's something that we could, you know, ask Enterprise to do that way. We could somehow, you know, point out and keep an eye on things and that would give something for our, for Lori Miller to do. So that's just my two cents. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing nothing else, motion on seven.
Lorik moves that the council adopt ordinance 2965, an ordinance to amend the conditions and restrictions in ordinance 2665 for automobile service and outdoor storage of rental vehicles on the property at 561 West College Avenue.
Next second. Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Hi.
Kuzakowski.
Hi.
Lorik.
Hi.
Dukneak.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Item eight is consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 19 of the municipal code to adopt the comprehensive plan for the city of Oak Creek. Before I turn this over very quickly, I just want to recognize we're not a full body tonight. Be my recommendation, we hold this over until we have everybody represented from the district here.
And certainly that would be the intent of staff as well. As we work through some of the comments that were received, we just want to make sure that we give the council enough time with the document in its complete form such that, you know, we don't piecemeal comments in there. So we are prepared, I think we'll be in position to bring this back to you at your next council meeting.
Any discussion on the comprehensive plan? Here.
A lot of information to digest.
It very much is.
Several hours' worth of reading over the weekend to try and come to understand all that. I guess I'm going to rely on Alderman Gale to help me understand all this information that's contained in there.
Got another weekend to cram.
No, you have a few days. Yeah, seriously though, I mean, anyone has any questions, any comments, we encourage you to get those to us, to ask those as soon as possible, just given the fact that we know that, I mean, you know, those changes that have to be made to the document and that does require some, there is some leg time between when we work through those issues and the final document preparation. So would certainly be appreciative of, if there are any other comments that are out there at all, please get those to us as quickly as possible.
Chris?
Actually, I'm my third time reading through it, so there is a lot of information.
There is a lot in there.
I think what we, what we should keep in mind when we read this thing is that it's a long-term plan. It's 20 years out and things can change within two years, five years, six years, seven years, 10 years, whatever. There is quite a bit of capability there to flex this plan as we go. It's not, nothing's set in concrete. So when you read through it, don't, don't be, don't pick it apart to the point where you're overthinking it, okay? Because there is flexibility along the way.
Other comments?
This would be presented for approval at the next council meeting?
That's correct.
Is there an issue if it will not be?
I think it's a simple majority, is that.
Okay.
Again, I'll provide input or questions, certainly prior.
Absolutely.
And it's a weighted document. We want to make sure that we take the proper time and give it the respect it needs. Okay. Motion to hold on eight till March 3rd?
We'll move to hold ordinance number 2963, ordinance to amend Chapter 19 of the municipal code to adopt the comprehensive plan of Oak Creek until the March 3rd, 2020, come a council meeting.
Kuzakowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman Kuzakowski.
Hi.
Lorik.
Hi.
Dukneak.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Item nine is consideration of a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement for the police and other protective services for the 2020 Democratic National Convention in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. And we have both our fire chief and our police chief with us here to explain the ins and outs of this whole contract.
Chief Anderson from the police department. This is, this is an agreement that's been going through some modifications and changes. It was working on, Milwaukee originally put one out that had some language that needed to be cleaned up and fixed. And the IGA that's in front of you tonight has the changes that give us the best ability to recoup any expenses that we will have if we assign people to assist with the DNC. I will say I am in favor of assisting the Milwaukee Police Department with what they need for the DNC. This is, this is something that as law enforcement, we do on a regular basis. When we had our incident back in 2012, Milwaukee sent, they're a lot bigger agency, but they sent most of their homicide unit and handled the officer-involved shooting portion of that. And that's how a lot of these things work and get done. It's not that far off from an agreement we have with the rest of the county on investigating officer-involved shooting. So this is collaboration amongst law enforcement. We also know that as a city, we're planning on what could happen here. If it's a sanctioned event, Milwaukee still will be assigning personnel to this. This is just not Oak Creek with this. And a little bit of background, they will be having law enforcement come in from all over the state and the country to assist in different venues. So our goal is to, there's been a request and they'll have a need for tactical teams. We have a very highly trained, well-respected tactical team. Other than that, I will not be committing resources to the DNC other than the use of the members of that tactical team. So that's why the DNC, my document is a draft because there's a lot of the wage things in that we were still trying to sort out with Milwaukee today. And so there's attachments that they want as far as the reimbursement of funds. This is, getting this agreement signed gives us the ability though to recoup. And one of the things that was changed is modifying and adopting the mutual aid statute in Wisconsin that says we will come and assist you, but you will reimburse us for what we're coming to assist you for if we bill you for that. And that statute was actually added to the IGA as well. So that will be this. The important part about getting this done now is Milwaukee has to start, if any of our officers, that will be there assisting in any capacity. If by the federal mandate, they have to have certain trainings in place, all of that has to start getting scheduled. And this IGA covers the ability for that training, reimbursement for what we need for that training as well. If we're, it gives us the ability to back out at some point. And if we, but if we back out, then we may have to minimally reimburse, if they've paid us for that training, we may have to give them that money back. So this is the basic. I'd love to tell you, I know exactly how many hours, how many people that are being requested. I don't, I don't have that. Don't think, we just had a Wisconsin Chiefs conference and there was no presentation on the DNC and I don't, right now it's still in the planning phases. I'm hoping by April, some things are going to start becoming more clear. I am not going to leave the cupboards bare for Oak Creek to do this. But I feel that we have some form of a commitment or obligation to assist where we can, when we can. And, and we will be reimbursed for what we're assigning to this event.
Thank you. Questions for Chief Anderson?
Alderman Dukneak, 3rd District. Chief, does the reimbursement come from the city of Milwaukee or the, and they bill the Democratic National Convention?
Milwaukee put in for a, I don't know how many million-dollar grant.
50.
50 million-dollar grant. And that's where all of this funding is going to come from.
Oh, great.
Milwaukee, it's going to be very important for us. And there's certain parameters we will have to do, create certain pay codes, different things so that they know they're reimbursing us for what we have. While our officers are there, if they're there, they're going to be feeding them. Housing is not an issue for us because we're neighbors. One of the issues we had a sticking point of, not just Oak Creek, other municipal areas or departments in the county, were the travel to and from because the old IGA didn't start compensation until you got to your venue. Well, that 20-minute drive we have now, come time of the DNC, could be a lot longer drive. And we want to make sure that when our officers are on the books for when they come to the Oak Creek Police Department, they have to travel, that we're getting reimbursed for that time and the travel time back to the city. And all of that's been worked out in here. I've read this contract, put it side by side a couple of times. I know the city attorney has as well. But Milwaukee will be handling the refund. We have to provide the proper documentation and then we get reimbursed.
So I guess the basic question, there's no concerns then about being compensated or, you know, being, being made good on what we're doing?
And I don't know if the grant has been awarded, but there, there have been, and I believe it will be, but there's something in the contract that they have to notify us in advance. If they don't get the funding, we are not obligated to continue to follow through with assigning people to it.
Good, thank you.
Greg, anything? Ken?
Good.
Okay. Motion on nine, and then we'll move on to 10 for fire.
We'll move to approve Resolution 12131-021720, approving the intergovernmental agreement for police and other protective services for the 2020 Democratic National Convention in Milwaukee.
Kuzakowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik.
Hi.
Dukneak.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Kuzakowski.
Hi.
And item 10 is consideration of a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement for fire and other protection services for the 2020 Democratic National Convention. We got Chief Krasik to explain the fire end of it.
So I'll echo the comments of Chief Anderson. The IGAs are essentially the same document, one for police, one for fire. And many of the same parameters are carried over into the fire document. As Chief Anderson had stated, the Milwaukee Fire Department is identified as the lead fire agency for the DNC events in the, in the security zone around the FI serve and then throughout the metropolitan area based on any sanctioned activities. As with the PD side, they are requesting assistance with the Milwaukee County Fire Departments, looking for additional personnel to, to help staff some of the standby events associated. I will reiterate again that the unknown is what occurs in the city of Oak Creek and our priority is the city of Oak Creek maintaining coverage during the month of July for standard emergency response and, and of course, any DNC events that may occur within our own community. As Chief Anderson alluded to, the tactical team is being allocated for the DNC event. From the fire department's perspective, my intention at this time is to assign our tactical EMS units to work along with the PD's tactical team. Outside of that, I don't have additional information for the requirements from the city of Milwaukee, but I don't anticipate allocating additional resources at this time.
Questions for Chief Krasik?
Same question. The reimbursement comes out of that same pot?
Exactly.
Okay.
Just if we have to use our emergency management unit here at City Hall or any police or fire facility for whatever reason for the, connected to the convention, is that reimbursable?
As.
It's only reimbursable if it's a sanctioned DNC event. So this is why we started our internal meetings for the city, a little bit of a sidetrack here, but if there's pop-up events taking place in Oak Creek, we will not get reimbursed for any of those, even though they have some correlation or tie to the DNC. They have to be sanctioned by DNC as an event for us to be eligible for reimbursement.
Right. And I think that's, you know, it's got, that's exactly, you know, the impression the fire department has also. It has to be part of the security plan as identified by the teams. And certainly Milwaukee Fire will be the lead agency for sanctioned events in the metropolitan area, including the city of Oak Creek. We would anticipate that for events in the city of Oak Creek that are sanctioned, Milwaukee would be contacting us for coverage resources.
I was thinking just of a VIP came and was holding up here and decided to take refuge in City Hall at the emergency management.
We would be on our own to provide, if there's a security need, we would be on our own for that. Unless Milwaukee, there are things where they can assign staffing. They can assign it from their pool of whatever resources they have if they feel it's an emergency situation that they would like to do. Then I think it may not even be our personnel that are here providing whatever services are required or what's, what's going to take place. But if it's not sanctioned and you just have somebody who wants to have an appearance here and they're requiring certain security that will be put, or an ambulance to stand by, that will be on us as a community just because we're in the vicinity of the DNC.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ken.
Chief, that just kind of prompted our, who's in charge or who controls events if something is going on here from the outside? Maybe you hadn't planned on or it was unexpected?
I guess I want to.
Say a VIP, political VIP showed up here at an event, along with there maybe a national
If, if it's going to be sanctioned, they would report that and Milwaukee would be assigning whatever detail that would need to be. So they could contact us and use our own employees or they could take resources that they have from somewhere else depending on what needs are here. If somebody just calls us and says, we're hosting a rally or we're having a breakfast at this location and we're going to require this, if there's any type of security that needs to be, that will be put on us as a local agency.
So no other agency would be in charge?
Well, sanctioned. Well, sanctioned event, yes, Milwaukee's still going to be in charge of those, but unsanctioned, that will be us.
Um, no further questions?
You know, Mayor Dan, I'm sorry, I, I have one just because I, I've heard that the, the community center is actually being considered by the, the committee, uh, for some off-site or, or off-hours events. You wouldn't then build the, the community center for those security services or...
Hey, I can tell you, and we had one meeting internally with city departments, the community centers also involved with that. We'll be branching out to make sure that we are sharing information in the city. Um, I can't comment on what we will or won't do at any point right now because I don't know.
Okay. Yeah, this was very, I guess, preliminary, but that consideration was being given.
Yes, but I can't say that if we have instances where, I'll use IKEA as an example, if there were a large need of resources, then we do have a billing...
Building, okay.
...uh, platform available, is it used every time? It depends on what services are needed and what scope.
Okay.
For that, but I can't, without knowing, I don't, I don't know.
Understood. Thank you, Chief.
No further questions. Motion on 10.
We'll move to approve resolution 12132-021720, approving the intergovernmental agreement for fire and other protection services for the 2020 Democratic National Convention in Milwaukee.
Mr. Kozak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukneak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye. Thank you, Chiefs. Um, item 11 is fire and its consideration of a motion to approve the purchase of a Trane Tracer SC control system for an upgrade at Fire Station 3, the amount of $115,865. Chief Krasik?
The fire department's requesting approval to purchase a Trane HVAC control system for Fire Station 3. Uh, last year, we went through a boiler replacement project at Station 3 and, and during that time, there was an understanding that the, the temperature control system would also be in need of replacement. Current temperature control system is original to Fire Station 3, approximately 20 years old. Um, as of now, the system is no longer supported by the manufacturer and replacement parts are, uh, very difficult, if not impossible, to obtain. Uh, the new system would be integrated into our, our current building and increase some efficiencies on the temperature control system. Um, HVAC systems are definitely not my area of expertise, so Dick Holka is here tonight for, uh, specific questions related to the system and how it would integrate into the boiler project.
All right. Questions for Dick?
Questions, Dick. Alderman Dukneak, 3rd District. He and I have had years of dealing with train equipment, uh, and, and the experiences were not good by any means. So, Dick, with, with these, with this new equipment, um, that's coming in, has the, the research been done that this new equipment will fit with the, with the existing system? And it'll work?
Yes. Basically, it's the same system that's running in this building.
Oh, okay.
And Fire Station number one. They, they're like any other software company. They will only support it for so long.
Right.
And then it's obsolete. And we're at that point. And any new equipment, let's say, for instance, we have three buildings with this scenario. The oldest being Fire Station number, uh, three, our police department and our DPW. They all have that current system. And back when we installed it, it was the current system, but what computer system do you get 20 years out of? So, a- and it's still functional, but when it breaks down is when we run into trouble. And that was somewhat the same scenario we ran into with the boilers. Um, the, the control panels, you were looking for aftermarket parts to try to Band-Aid them back together and that's just not the way they're designed. So, basically, it gives you more flexibility. The old system, you had to have one server that was running the, that building management software. And you, you, the only place you could access it was at that one particular location. Well, now with the new system, it's all web-based. So, now with my cellphone, I can turn the temperature up in here if you'd like. Um, i- it's, it's much better. We've learned some things based on this building. You know, if you go take the thermostat off the wall, there's not a wire on it. It's all wireless communication. But in the buildings, it, the wireless communication doesn't always work the best because you have steel, the, the radio signals don't fly through it as well as you'd like and you run into some issues. So, with this, with the current station that we have at Fire Station 3, I said I didn't want the wireless communication. I want to hardwire it back, uh, because I have no trouble with hardwired systems. They just don't, they don't give us trouble. You, you'll get a component failure here and there, but you won't get that loss of communication that you run into because somebody opened the door and blocked the signal.
And so, again, you see a seamless transition with, uh, with this new system to the existing equipment?
Basically, we have the new boilers and the new boilers operate on the new protocol that everything is basically, it's pretty much an industry standard today. Um, it used to be that the companies were so proprietary, Johnson Control would have theirs and Trane would have theirs and nobody talked to each other. Well, they figured out that that doesn't work. So, there's pretty much one standard protocol that everybody's, uh, going at today and that's what everybody's using. The, the boilers, we're working right now to make sure that the contractor's fulfilling his, his part of the specifications to get it so that when we do swing the new, new system in, that it will seamlessly hook up to it. Um, the, what, what we call air handlers, um, that's basically like your furnace blower in your house. And there's a controller that runs that. Well, the whole controller's comes out and a new one goes in, you know, half the size of it and has 10 times the power that it has. And that will turn around and control the motors and the frequency drives and all of that type of equipment. So, from that standpoint, it's turning things on and off and, and looking at temperatures. All of the, all of the temperature sensors that are over there is your outdoor air temperature, what the air temperature is coming off of your heating coils. All of those sensors are 20 years old and they start to drift and they're not as accurate as they used to be. All of those sensors get replaced. Um, all of that stuff gets recalibrated, all of the, all of the controls get replaced as far as the building management system goes. And you can, like I said, I can access it either through my laptops or, or through, through yourself, your, your mobile phones.
Thank you, Dick. And just some background on that. We had a train system at the community center and it suffered a catastrophic failure. And this is back in the day, 10, 12 years ago, where, yeah, it wasn't wireless. We had to get a software engineer from their corporate in Detroit to, to try and, and rework the system.
And you know, that can happen with anybody's...
We wouldn't want that to...
That can happen with anybody's equipment. Let me tell you what I did when, as soon as we took ownership of this building, I was able to each, there's 76 units buried above the ceilings throughout this building. They're like residential furnaces and air conditioners. And each one of them's got a controller in it and that thing has got programming. Some of them actually have programming to turn lights on and off. Well, if that was to fail, you're trying to guess how to recreate that. So, when I first, when I first sat down, I was able to take my laptop from my desk and I sat and I backed up to our city network. Every one of the controllers programming in it so that if a controller fails, all you do is you, you don't even have to put it in the unit. You take the new controller, you plug it into your, with a USB cord right to your laptop and you can download the program into it and then install it.
Dick, in my eyes, you're a magician and a genius with all this. You say it's going to work, I have no, uh, no issue.
There's always, there's always some bugs that you have to work out. I mean, the, it, the technology that's in, you know, we, we put technology in buildings to save us money, but in the long run, you spend more on maintenance and upkeep and, because that stuff is that much more technical.
Thank you, Dick.
Any other questions? Greg? Ken? Krasik?
No, we've, Krasik, we're, we've been on borrowed time there, so.
So, real quick, any focus on energy, money, rebates from We Energies?
I've been dealing with focus on energy and not to get off the subject, but we kind of did that Siemens, Siemens program a while back and determined that we weren't going to follow through with that. Well, I've taken on with focus on energy, money for redoing every one of the, uh, lights in the garage. Um, they've got really good rebates and I'm going to follow through to make sure, to see if there's any money available for, for this type of project also. It, it probably doesn't because we're really not doing anything extremely different than we were before as far as saving more energy, um, because we're already doing it, but I, I'm, I'm planning on checking on it.
Okay.
Maybe there is some with the boilers because we're going to what they call a condensing boiler and that boiler is more efficient than the older boilers. I haven't even been invoiced for them, so I can't go after We Energies.
And then this wasn't a RFP for competitive bid with Trane and others? This was more or less...
This fell, this falls under the, what they call the US Communities Program. And what that is, is there are contracts that are, are put out for, for agencies, um, like Graybar, for instance, they fall under it. You can go there, it's, it's, it's all pre, pre-done so that you don't have to go through all of that, that bidding process anymore.
So, so basically, it was kind of a design build and you had a not to exceed 120 on it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. Uh, that's all I got. Uh, no other questions for Dick? Uh, motion please.
We'll move to approve the purchase of the Trane Tracer SC control system upgrade for Fire Station number three in the amount of $115,865.
Mr. Kozak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dick. Um, item 12, consideration of a resolution approving a certified survey map, uh, for Highgate LLC for the property at 8769 South 13th.
Thanks. The CSM, as it states, creates, uh, lots one for the, of the Highgate development, uh, the Highgate PD Lot 1, for those of you who may recall, is for an indoor soccer lacrosse complex. It also creates Lot 2 for a future user that we're currently negotiating with. Uh, the remainder of Lot 3 would be the, uh, the outlots and the storm, the stormwater ponds and there's some ancillary development that could take place along 13th Street. Lot 3, and actually would be, be classified as an outlot, would be further subdivided in the future, once they had, uh, more clarity on the users along their, South 13th Street. Uh, the lots for, on the southern edge of the parcel, uh, for the credit union and for the lot that was created for the microhospital, which is no longer in the picture, uh, those have already done, been completed and recorded via separate CSM. So, this CSM just creates the parcels for the indoor soccer lacrosse complex and the future user on Lot 2, as well as the outlot for the stormwater and the future outlots along 13th Street.
Questions for Doug? Nothing on this one. Okay, seeing none. Uh, motion?
Clark moves that the council adopts resolution number 12133-021720, a resolution approving a certified survey map submitted by John Thompson, Highgate LLC, for the property at 7869 South 13th Street.
Heck, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item 13 is engineering and its consideration of a resolution supporting the submission of application for the 2020, 24, the 2024 transportation alternatives programs, uh, award cycle under the safe routes to school category. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, uh, council will recall, uh, back in 2014, um, the city had applied for a, a, a previous cycle TAP grant, uh, through the Department of Transportation and that, uh, uh, grant was awarded and it was used to, uh, fund the, uh, creation of the safe routes to school, uh, plan. And, um, what we are doing now is applying for this current cycle's, uh, uh, TAP grant, um, with the intent of using the grant if successful, uh, to construct, um, several of the projects that are outlined in the, in the safe routes to school plan. And, um, the schools that, uh, we are applying for are listed below, uh, are listed in the report and, uh, there's just a wide range of, of, uh, infrastructure that would be constructed, um, uh, under this project.
Questions for Mike?
Can we start any sooner? It just seems like there's just so much, so many important phases and parts here that I just thrown it all down.
Right. Probably the best, the, 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 the quickest timing that we, we could expect would be, um, you know, getting the grant this year, um, entering into the, uh, agreements, uh, and, and, uh, getting started on design, um, possibly wrapping up design, uh, around this time next year would be the earliest. And then, uh, you know, we would be able to probably start on the construction then in 2021, but that, that would be best case scenario.
Are we prioritizing, um, maybe more high-traffic areas or, you know, like I know, um, West Middle School, you know, for instance, along there. I mean, you know, the high-traffic areas, not that they're not all high-traffic areas, but...
Right, yes. We do, uh, the, the estimated, uh, you know, grant request has, um, uh, what we've, what you've probably heard referred to as the HAWK system, uh, it stands for High Intensity Activated Crosswalk Signal. And, and, um, that would be put in, uh, probably kind of in conjunction with, uh, the county's, uh, reconstruction of, of 13th Street in that area.
Mike, I do have one question. I mean, is, is it realistic to think, um, that the full amount would be awarded by the state for that safe routes to school program? Because I'm on the Traffic and Safety Committee and I know we got something, but far less than what we were expecting. Was that it?
Um, that might be another grant that, that you're thinking about.
Okay.
Because this one is, we, you know, we've just, um, they haven't, they haven't done any, any ruling on who's getting money, uh, yet. We, we did submit the application. Um, this needs to be, uh, uh, this, this resolution of support needs to, uh, supplement that. Uh, so, uh, if that passes tonight, then, then we will get that in with the application and we expect it here then, you know, over the course of the next six, six to eight weeks if we're successful.
Oh, okay.
But the expectation is, is that we would get the, the full amount. We had, we had to go through, you know, the whole outline of, of the estimate. Um, we were conservative, uh, in the estimate, uh, to assure that, that the, uh, the funding amount will, will cover what we're trying to do.
Great, thank you.
If nothing else, motion?
We'll move to approve resolution 12130-021720, supporting the submission of application for 2020 through 2024 transportation alternatives program award cycle under the safe routes to schools category.
Mr. Kozak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Uh, 14 is the License Committee and it's to consider various licenses listed, uh, on the 21720 License Committee Report. Um, any reports from License Committee?
Uh, as Alderman Steve, as chairman of our committee, would always say, I, I take it that you've had the time to read the common council report and ask for approval of items number one and two on that common council report.
And a motion?
Has, uh, Jim Dandy just changed hands?
You know, and I, I...
I've heard that.
I just, I, I guess they're closed.
Oh, they are?
So, I mean, we're kind of off the record here, but I just, I heard that...
That's what I heard. I don't know if it's true or not.
I don't know we're on the record.
So, we, we as the licensing committee have not been made aware of, of any changes as of yet. This was, uh, bar talk.
So, are you granting an operator's license to a closed business?
Well, these are just bartenders licenses.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so I mean, technically, they could be used anywhere.
It's my understanding, they're working through it and they just had to get through, uh, a fire inspection and they were ready to go.
And I, I think isn't in the, the actual renewal date is June 1st. July 1st, thank you. So...
That's for the liquor license.
Correct.
Catherine?
Yeah, so there is a new business owner for Jim Dandies. We are working with them. The items on the council report are... The items on the council report are strictly for the bartenders or the operators, and yes, Alderman, Toman, they can use those in the city. They applied for working there, but they are able to use those at other locations.
Okay, and Mike, and my apologies, so yes, I am, there we go, I am moving to consider to grant the various license requests as listed on the 21720 License Committee Report.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman and Lorick.
Aye.
Duke Neack.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
And item 15 is to consider a motion to approve the February 11th, 2020 vendor summary. Please take a look and direct any questions to the appropriate person, usually at the front table.
Item number 12, Bridgette? Support, is it?
Yeah, Mike, I can shed a little light on that, we've been working with Rambo, their environmental engineering firm, on a couple of efforts related to the former Peter Cooper site, some related to the blast ability, others related to the filling of the wetlands and the remedial action plan.
Any other questions? Seeing none, motion?
We'll move to approve the February 11th, 2020 vendor summary report in the combined total amount of $479,797.27.
Mr. Kozak, go second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Duke Neack.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
And 16 is to consider a motion to convene in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute Section 19.85, Parent One, Parent G, to discuss potential litigation regarding the cost recovery action for the environmental remediation on the property owned by the city at 9006 South Fifth Avenue. President Ken, Gale.
Thank you, Mayor. Gale, we'll move to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute Section 19.85, Sub One, Sub G, to discuss potential litigation regarding cost recovery action for environmental remediation on property owned by the city at 9006 South Fifth Avenue.
Mr. Kozak, go second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Duke Neack.
Aye.
We'll now convene in a closed session and resume at its conclusion.
Oh, Gale, we'll move to reconvene in open session, sorry, Dan.
That's okay.
Mr. Kozak, go second.
Toman, second.
Item 18, if there is action needed? Oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Alderman, Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Duke Neack.
Aye.
Toman.
Now, if there is action needed, we'll entertain a motion.
Oh, okay, sorry. Gale, we'll move that the common council authorize Murphy and Proctor Towers to file lawsuit for cost recovery under Chapter 292 of Wisconsin State Statutes regarding the property at 9006 South Fifth Avenue.
Mr. Kozak, go second. Yep. Yes.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Duke Neack.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
And that brings us to adjournment. Anybody got anything? Not? Oh, election, Catherine, you want to tell us when hours are at the polling spots?
Election Day for spring primary election is tomorrow, polls open at 7:00 a.m. and close at 8:00 p.m.
Thank you, please get out there and vote, exercise your right, and motion for adjournment, please.
Oracle, move to adjourn.
Neack, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Duke Neack.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Thank you very much, good night.